Um, this is, um, the meeting that was supposed to take place yesterday, but because we had NLP day yesterday, we postponed our meeting for Tuesday. I just want to thank all of the community going out and supporting the various events in honor of Dr. Robert the day during breakfast that was held by a host of light, uh, area for program, very good sense, and then other things happening. That's right, that's first, that counts for, and up to all that special program. At this time, I'd like to call on Pastor Norris, which decided that he's first to present a prayer. Thank Pastor Norris. And following that prayer, then you will all rise and put aside and all of the, uh, like, Pastor Norris, may you.
Thank you. Please join me in prayer. Father, thank you for Jesus. Thank you for the awesome privilege of prayer to come to you and ask for your help tonight. Lord, we do that tonight. Father, we pray for our mayor. We pray for our council members. Lord, as a, we thank you for the service, Lord, here in Tifton, Lord, and pray in the meeting tonight, Lord, in the days to come, you'll give them wisdom and insight, Lord, to guide us and to lead us well, Father. Lord, we're so thankful for those that work to keep us safe, Lord, those like firefighters and those police personnel and those who are emergency personnel, Lord, that work to keep us safe, Lord. And I pray you'll protect them and shield them and keep them safe as they work so hard to keep us safe as well. Lord, we're so excited here among our churches, Lord, for the Tifton area celebration in March. And Father, pray you continue to give our churches a sense of unity. Uh, give us the ability to reach across denominational lines and racial lines, to love each other and to be unified, Lord, to touch people for you. Lord, bless this time together tonight, we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Do you all need to rise? I'd like to feel a bit. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. We, we do have, um, agendas back here on the podium. If anyone would like to grab one and follow along with us. The next item on our agenda is the approval of these. So we all have, um, so this is about, this is about, this is plenty of time and learning. Yeah, and then public hours, that's always, yeah. Do you have an agenda before you all? I will take a motion. Please, I approve of my.
Oh. Sorry.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, we do have the December sixteenth minutes in our packet. Uh, so you have a chance to review those. And if there is an approval, um, or a motion to approve, I'll take that at this point. If there is any changes, we'll take that motion as well.
I do move to approve as is.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, thank you. The next item on our agenda is the public comments section of our program. Um, I do have one person that has signed in. Uh, Mr. John Low is here who would like to speak. Uh, was there anyone else that wanted to speak? Mr. Low, if you want to go ahead and make your way to the podium, was there anyone else that wanted to speak? You need your agenda. What's your name?
No, I need Stephen.
Oh, Steve, Stephen. We've got some issues up here.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Low, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I have an opportunity to come up here and speak to you about things I'm doing at DDA. I thought it would be a good, uh, kind of stuff about a new year and everything. But I want to give you a brief rundown of what we've accomplished in the last, after eight years on the DDA. Uh, number one on my, on my list is the street lights. We were from this, we replaced the DDA, it made the place all through the city. Uh, it came in originally at eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We budgeted eight hundred and fifty, but we came in under budgeted at four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Paid down forty thousand dollars before, before the final project had an off street. It wasn't the same when you do any DDA. Uh, we have the LED on Main Street, the string light, the street light, the string lights that go between East Streetlights. And we have those. Uh, we have a couple of streets kicked three, which commerce, uh, Avenue, uh, all valves and the whole outs, uh, to repair the plants and everything on Main Street. We finished up Streets Kick Two, Two, which I started, uh, my term started about the time it was, it was in the middle of that. So we finished that up. Uh, just not, uh, just not Avenue project, which, uh, DDA funded half of that, but in the, the tune of like two hundred and ten, I don't know, like, awesome in that area. And that's been a very good project, uh, for the city and for us in the community. But, uh, it's been accomplished. If you gone over the driveway and look at it, it really looks nice. A few fence touches and you put on the street lights and some on trees, but other than that, it's, uh, it's pretty well completed. Uh, the DDA paid for additional parking spaces on the north side.
Uh, DDA paid for that because it wasn't budgeted into the original, uh, original price. And, uh, we came up with that and decided to go ahead and do it because it was, it was a benefit to the public and a benefit to, to public parking. Um, we sold finally the Taylor building, uh, to a business, which will put it back on the tax roll. Uh, it's a, uh, gonna be an adult daycare, which, uh, as we've worked through everything, uh, they'll be opening up in the next couple of months and get that started. We've started in the green space in the back, and that'll be completed next month. And then we'll have that finished up for them to be able to take care of that. Also be a ben, be a benefit to the, uh, welcome center because it can be used for that as well and not just for the, uh, for the Taylor building people. Uh, we rented the former, uh, Labor Department building to do a, since reformed, uh, Judge Benson. And that's progressing right along. We just signed a new lease for them for another year. And so they'll progress on with that for the next year. The crosswalks, I know everybody's noticed that, they had to have. Uh, we've done something to the tune of fifteen of them. That's, uh, and we, uh, got grant money from the United States Department of Agriculture to the tune of ninety-nine thousand dollars. And we spent all that and, uh, and got it going and, uh, look forward to doing some more later on. Uh, we purchased the Davis building and we're still then working on projects on that to try to complete that. We've had some, some hiccups with the, uh, trying to find a contract to do it. But, uh, what we, uh, we went over the plans today. We're gonna try to demolish, uh, take down the roof in that rear and get rid of it. And then take the building itself and, and stabilize it, get the, the, the roof completed on it to where there would be intrusion of water. And then the front facade, before that falls off and hits somebody, we're gonna stabilize that to where that won't, uh, won't be a danger to anybody. Uh, the pub, public art logos, um, Mary Glenn Hendricks has been working, uh, with the, uh, the Arts Department, Arts Council. To, um, Coca-Cola logo, in case you, I don't know if y'all remember that. That was originated here in Tifton. Uh, ultimately got painted over, but it's, uh, it's, it's gonna be in the process of being restored and taken care of. And so we'll have that. So the DDA is working to fund some of that. Uh, the Museum of Arts and Heritage, uh, has finally been transferred to the DDA. And, uh, so, uh, we can progress on with, uh, with grants and, uh, and projects to finish that up. We're also working with, uh, trying to work with the, uh, the county to, uh, take the, the Sunday School building and, uh, and revamp it and, and make it into a, uh, a courthouse square there. And, uh, that'd be a, a real benefit to Tifton because that's been eyesore for many a year. So it's ready to get it, get it moving, get it straightened out and taken care of. So basically, that's what I was trying to come to you. We, uh, we went over today, uh, uh, projects for the coming year. Uh, of course, working with the city for Horizon Mills, try to get something done with that. And, uh, we have a lot of vision for that. And, uh, we're getting the Vision Committee back up and running to where we can, uh, go in and take projects. We have our, uh, retreat in March. And in March, uh, we come up with more projects that we can have and try to work together and, uh, and take, uh, taxpayer money and, and spend it wisely. And that's what we're trying to do. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for a good report. Was there anyone else that wanted to speak before we move on with our agenda? Okay. All right, excellent. All right, gentlemen, uh, you have before you the consent agenda. And, uh, we'll remind, uh, those that might be with us tonight that weren't with us at our workshop, uh, any of the items that are on our agenda for this evening's uh, voting has been discussed at our workshop at a prior meeting. So we have, uh, looked at all the information that has been presented. But we can certainly, if there's any question or anything that needs to happen. Uh, on the consent agenda, we have the adoption of the South Tifton Redevelopment Assessment and Strategy, prepared by Bruce Green and Associates. And then the resolution authorizing the preparation and submittal of the community home improvement investment, or home investment program known as the CHIP grant. So, uh, we can take those together, or if you have any questions, need more information, we can discuss them individually. Okay.
We moved to take all of them at one time.
Okay, to approve both of those?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion, uh, motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? All right, seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, thank you. The next two items are regarding resolutions. Uh, we have a resolution adopting the updated schedule of fees. I know we had some discussion about that at the workshop. Jessica did that research and presented that to us. Is there any update or any change to any of that?
Mayor Council, too, if you will, on the first page, uh, thanks, Jack, catching that. I think it was a pint of asbestos. I think it would be sixty dollars a pint. Just, I think it was period out. Catching that. And then on the second page, um, Frank and I talked about the Roger Center, what purpose we. She submitted this, uh, during the budget, but like fifty dollars an hour for that purpose. Plus seventy-five hours, seventy-five dollars, plus the fact that. Seventy-five dollars, and it's there.
All right, that being said, and those recommendations being made, uh, we'll take a motion concerning the, uh, resolution of updating the schedule of fees.
Before you do that, I want to just point out residential garbage rates monthly are nineteen dollars and forty-one cents. I had a, a text from earlier that it was high, but it's not. It's nineteen forty-one, which is up three dollars and fifty cents.
Okay, all right, duly noted. Okay, any other discussion questions?
I do, I do have a, a discussion. Uh, Pete, I think I had made the comment last time. If, uh, being that we are the administrators of the solid waste, uh, service department, do we have to, being that we are partners with the county, do we have to sort of like kind of discuss any increase in fees? Are these increased or are we just stating these fees? Is that?
This is for the city, so it has something on the landfill, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was looking at the landfill disposal tip.
That's just asbestos, asbestos.
Okay.
So there's no, it's, you're just stating.
We're just stating the fees on there. Okay, okay.
This is just the one, one stop schedule fees that would be all.
Right. Put them all.
Oh, okay. All right, all right. That's, that's what I thought.
Do you have a suggestion that increases or anything?
Okay, all right.
Okay. All right, that being said.
Just clarify.
Good, it was good, good to clarify. No, no problem whatsoever. All right, so I will take a motion concerning adopting or not adopting the updated, uh, schedule of fees.
So move.
To adopt?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right, any further discussion? All righty, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, thank you. The next item is rela, resolution updating the Tifton County Service Delivery Strategy. And I know Pete and Rob have been working diligently on that process. So, uh, any, any changes, updates, Pete, we need to know about?
Uh, yeah, Mayor Council, this, uh, was brought to my attention, uh, sometime early last week. And, uh, I've asked Andy Welch group up and wanted to review it. And I reviewed it. Uh, it appears that the forms that were adopted by the county, uh, are not quite correct. I did notice that on the, uh, Form One, they have, uh, four of the services are listed that are, uh, subject to change in the paragraph that, uh, are not to be changed. So basically, those services need to be excluded from this paragraph three because they're contained in paragraph four. The other issue that we had with the form was, uh, on street maintenance. It appears, and I think the council seems to want to, more than you may want to, uh, but they have checked, uh, on street maintenance, they have checked paragraph C. And paragraph C says one or more cities will provide this service only with the, within the incorporated boundaries. And the service will not be provided in the unincorporated area. That's not correct. They're gonna be providing the unincorporated area, Omega, Ty-Ty, and Tifton will. So the correct box should have been one or more cities will provide this service only within their incorporated boundaries. And the county will provide the service in the unincorporated areas. Well, unfortunately, there wasn't a box for that. Uh, so that, that form is not correct.
Roads in the unincorporated areas.
Basically, the, the box that they have checked is that one or more cities will provide this service only with the, within the incorporated boundaries. And the service will not be provided in unincorporated areas. So basically, that box is basically saying that nobody's gonna be taking care of the streets in the unincorporated area. So that's.
But back to my, but, but what it's saying is they're only, the county is only going to do maintenance in the unincorporated areas.
Correct. That is what they have.
Which is fine if they take the money, if they don't take the money out of the general fund.
Well.
But I'm not paying for that. I know, but I'm, my point is, we don't want to tie, we're not gonna tie our hands to where it's okay, take it out of the general fund and all of us city taxpayers pay for it. And they won't come inside the city because I've had it.
Well, one of the other things that we like to do is, uh, is the, uh, as y'all are aware, you know, we have another service delivery strategy that's gonna be due to DCA in June. Uh, we are, uh, in the process of talking with the county to try to come to an agreement on a SDS to submit to DCA in June. In fact, we've got two days of mediation with the county on February the twentieth and February the twenty-eighth in order to try to discuss these issues. Uh, I also think it'd be, uh, wise to check with DCA. I'm not certain at this point whether or not these forms need to be submitted to DCA at this point in time in order for them to qualify for a grant. Uh, so I think that we may, uh, give Rusty Haygood a call next couple of days to check with him. Uh, if this is something that's required, I'm sure we're gonna be able to work through it with the county so that it doesn't jeopardize anything that they want to do. But again, you know, I, uh, we, certainly these, these have to be corrected, uh, by the county. And then, uh, this will give us some time. We can talk, talk with Rusty Haygood and see exactly, you know, at DCA, see exactly what needs to be done at this point, if anything. Because like I said, we do have the upcoming mediation. We do have the upcoming requirements to resubmit all of our Form Twos in June. So, uh, with that being said, uh, you know, I, uh, I think the first step is to check with Rusty Haygood. Second, you know, if he says there's something that is required for the county to get the grant, then let's get these, uh, corrected. But we need to ensure that, uh, going forward, that it, there's an understanding that these will only be extended until our June deadline on all of our other SDS, uh, services.
Well, then, do we table this until our?
I would suggest that we, you know, we just postpone it indefinitely.
Okay.
And that would be the motion that I would suggest.
All right. Does everybody understand the procedure?
Yeah, Council, except, uh, one thing to, uh, what prompted all this?
Jim and I talked, uh, there is a subdivision, Willow Brook.
Creek.
Willow Creek, excuse me. That's, uh, that's, that's, David Deloach is doing Phase Two, uh, which is in the county. The original water and sewer maps did not include this particular section. So this is what prompted a lot of this. We had to redo and draw the boundaries. DCA said who serves the ci, who serves this, uh, area. Uh, we redid the maps, redid the boundaries. This would trigger an updated form to say we, we acknowledge an updated map only in this particular area. So this is what prompted all this discussion. So Rob and I are gonna talk about the grants with the county and make, this is just administrative, um, you know, uh, review that we have to do on these forms. And whether it's, it's timely or not, what has to happen is that form for the extension of the water in this particular subdivision, that has to happen. So we'll, we'll continue, we'll bring that back soon as we find that out.
Okay, all right. Well, then, uh, that being said, if that makes sense to everyone, unless everyone has any questions, we'll take a motion to, uh, to postpone. To an, yeah, not to a date specific, but an indefinite point to give, uh, everyone time to adequately, adequately work through, uh, these concerns.
So move.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? All right. All right, uh, the next item is new business, and that's a recommendation for awarding the request for proposals for the development of affordable housing in South Tifton redevelopment area. And that would be Bruce and Jessica, I believe. So, uh, Bruce, if you wanna share some very exciting information, uh, with the council?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, and I certainly will defer to Jessica on a, a couple of these. Um, she was instrumental in, um, creating the RFP and issuing the RFP. And then at that point, um, some of us as staff came in to support, uh, what we needed to do to go through this process. And so you have in front of you just a brief outline. So from November, mid-November until today, we've been through this process. We ended up with four candidate companies, uh, that scored out pretty high, and we felt like it was important to bring all four of them in. So two weeks ago, um, Thursday, we had basically a half day of interviews. And one of our new council, uh, persons sat in and the mayor sat in and, um, our staff. Um, and it was really quite impressive. Um, there were some definitive moments when they would describe certain things that, you know, we wanted to be sure this is what, that South Tifton needed. And so with that said, we got it, we narrowed it down to two, and then the staff met again and we submitted, um, two questions. One was, um, would your company be willing to modify the materials and the fenestration of the, of the buildings to better fit our community? And the second question was, would your company be willing to modify the layout or the plan upon the land to better fit the neighborhood and the community? And, uh, literally since Friday, we received the responses back and the staff has kind of met and talked. Um, and in this document that you have and Jessica and the city manager has, um, the, the general, um, recommendation to you all is that a group out of Aldasta Integrity Development Partners, known as IDP, um, we felt like they came across. And, um, two things in particular that stuck out. Uh, one was that in their written proposal, they were the only team that mentioned specifically going after other funding mechanisms. And to, to back it up for a second, the way this works, um, to build housing is very expensive. And so what they do is they syndicate or package what is called low-income housing tax credits. They're a little bit different than the historic rehabilitation credits. But, um, they find capital investors who are willing to invest, and once they do that, then they have to go before the Department of Community Affairs. And it is a, a very competitive process. And they indicated to us that we need to be prepared as a community for at least a two-year span. Um, there's a certain point range, and we all talked about, and they talked with us about what we could do as a community to up a point. But around fifty-four points is the score that, you know, you're even considered. Uh, everything from any infrastructure improvements that we do down in the area to things like the urban redevelopment plan that you all just adopted, uh, the South Tifton redevelopment plan, all of those add up in the point system. So what would it look like? Uh, basically fifty-six residential units. And to give you an idea, if you look at, um, Tifton lofts, Tifton townhouses, um, that is thirty-four units. So this would be about not quite twice the number of units. Um, and I have a couple of images in just a moment, I'll, we'll bring up on the screen. The total cost would be roughly about eleven point nine million dollars. Um, they did talk about their willingness to purchase the land if that needed to be done, and that's in your document as well. And then finally, um, in addition to us talking about it being very an arduous task and taking time, um, they gave us an outline, starting if they were chosen, when they would work, starting in March. And it would have, uh, construction completion in September of twenty twenty-two. And that seems like a long way off, but again, it's a very complicated process, and not until the first year will they even know whether or not they receive the LIHTCs. Um, Stephen, if I may. So what you're about to see is, these are concepts that were presented to us, um, in their written proposal. And then when we sent back our request to give us an idea of how they might modify their original, okay, there's the aerial. That is the western portion of the five point seven acres that the city bought of the original Captain's Point, which we said in the last meeting, it no longer exists. We now call this the Old Omega Development Site. Is it showing up?
Hours is, but Johnny's having, Stephen, you might, might need you to come help. Um, I'm not sure what's not, what's not pulling up on his computer.
And real quickly, a, a couple of the issues that the team, um, wanted to, to search for and to understand was, in this layout, how does this fit into the neighborhood? Is there connectivity, um, so that if need be, the children at, uh, Matt Wilson can walk into that neighborhood in a very safe way? Um, and so what you're looking at, that long, oh goodness, I apologize. I thought I turned it off, excuse me. Sorry, somebody from this city. So anyway, along Old Omega Road, you see that the, most of the units would face that, and they, they have, as you see in your, um, information, uh, the community, uh, building, they have a maintenance facility, a playground, a fenced community garden. They have a leasing office, a community room, a computer center, and a fitness center. And one of the things that we kept hearing repeatedly from these companies is how the Department of Community Affairs looks at how that development meets the needs of their occupants or, and the community. And so again, that accounts for some of the costs. Okay, um, Stephen, if we may, look, that's just another, um, shot of it, and then two more, please. So this is the facade rendering that they sent us or delivered in their first presentation. And this is why we went back and said, would you be, be willing to modify that in the final image? And this is actually a development that they did in Thomasville. And if you look at, in the architectural world, the fenestration is the placement of the windows and the architectural details. And there are a lot of things from Tifton's built environment that show up in a building like that, the brackets, the gables, the, uh, two-thirds, one-third relationship of those columns to their base. That's that arts and craft style. And so this is really, I think, most of us in this room would say, that's really quite attractive and, and quite well done. Uh, we ask about materials, and one of the things we learned is DCA requires that at least one-third of the exterior facade be brick. So they have to work with a split, uh, pattern if they don't do the whole thing in brick. So any, um, Pete, did you have any comments? Jessica?
Any, any questions?
Go back to the second slide or, or back one slide. Can I go back a minute? Okay. This proposed. Slide, is that the entire?
It's only halfway.
It's the western side that's been cleared. Yeah, not what you all just purchased in December. That still has.
Oh, that's, okay, I'm sorry. I've, um, yep.
I, I do wanna add too, so if you look at the, um, the big map, if you look, I guess, to your left, um, that is gonna be the, uh, acreage that the Board of Ed owns. Um, so it'll be, uh, you see number one, it's gonna be to the left, left of that. That is still being proposed, and we did have discussions. We're on the tail end of the CDPG. That's where the, the building would go. Again, we have, if we have the housing initiative and, and, and creating this village for, uh, the, the neighborhood. And then we have the community center for the, uh, incubator for businesses, um, education and teens. Uh, then it becomes, uh, all access. And this is what, really what was envisioned from our first meeting. So wanted to point that out to you. And then also, um, this particular company also has enough vision, the other half of Captain's Point could become even more detailed when you talk about single-family, small homes for ownership. So we wanna do a combination of that if we can. So it's, it really is up to the imagination. But the biggest thing I could tell you is getting back to the community, letting them know about this, uh, and understanding what it really means, uh, for the future. Because this is only the start. Uh, again, this is not final. This is not, uh, this is not, you know, talking about, um, anything specific except this is the company that the committee is recommending to go forward. There's a lot of work to do, uh, from this point on. So if there's, uh, if you do not have any other questions, what I do, I, I would recommend, uh, first, let me thank the committee, uh, for looking at this, detailing it, uh, and understanding and going through the, the questions and scenarios. I think it was well, well done. Uh, but with that, I'd recommend that we identify IDP as the developer for the housing initiative. But with that, I'd recommend that we identify IDP as the developer for the housing initiative in South Tifton, and then developing what the next step is, talking about the application, our funding, and then exploring different things and bringing that back to you and the community for final approval. That'd be my recommendation.
In their proposal, they got into such detail with regard to things like a community garden. You know, they want to be able to, you know, grow fresh vegetables and healthy eating initiatives and things like that. They talked about a community room, a computer center, reaching out to the, to our educational facilities to maybe offer tutoring and things like that, and then also healthcare. So they really were very broad-based as far as the involvement that they wanted to bring into the community. So that was very exciting to me. And to think, you know, when we started this process of the conversation of what do we do with this particular area, when we were just beginning to talk about it, the thought of basically a $12 million investment seemed so pie in the sky, but here we are. And the, you know, the change that this can make, the transformative change that this can make in this particular area, I think is really exciting. And it's just the tip of the iceberg. There's so much more. Again, with the CHIP grant that we talked about, allowing people to come in and renovate their owner-occupied homes, it's just beginning to, we always said in Main Street, all boats rise and fall together. It's the beginning of those boats rising, which will help all of our community. So that's just my two cents worth to add to what the presentation Bruce has made.
Thank you. And if I may, just a couple more quick comments. Just so the general audience understands that the rents can be affordable because of these tax credits. We all, as a team, really questioned these companies because they're, they demonstrated to us a range of rents. And they also talked about mixed income, that it's a very complex mathematical formula when you talk about it. But the assurance is to people in the South Tifton area, people across Tifton that would want to be able to afford, this will be beautiful, affordable housing, which we so sorely need. And then I'm going to finish with this. And so since December 31st, when you closed on the western, roughly six acres, which completes the 12-acre site, we've been hard at work. The city attorney, myself, Moses, and the city has engaged a contractor who is very familiar with each individual case of the 40-some-odd trailers that were left on the site. And as of today, we've made progress on four of those. But we've put together, our staff has put together a very precise database, thank you, to the bank who shared theirs with us. And because there were a lot of unknowns, but the way we begin to slowly and incrementally clean up that property, that also becomes a part of the scoring process that DCA looks at. What is the city doing in the surrounding area? And so we are just working on it on a day-by-day basis. And we're taking very careful steps in how we do that.
Excellent.
What data do we have that shows what is affordable? It's easy to throw out, this is affordable.
I can get you that, yeah. It's actually in there more complex. Their proposal was about 100 pages, but we can show you. And it comes out to like 60% of the median income for Tiff County. Can they afford to pay that? Or is that their income? And again, it's kind of mathematically complex, but I'll get you a chart, and it'll show you that.
It's a standardized formula. It's not just saying, well, for Tifton, it should be this. Now, it's various different regards. Count that formula calculated, and so that you're comparing apples to apples regardless of...
HUD, yeah, HUD sends out those. They do them every few years.
So we should be rest assured when I hear affordable, that it really will be affordable.
There will be so many rooms that would be available to somebody that's in like the 40% or 50% median income level, and then some of them all the way up to 70. So people that are in that 40-50 bracket might pay $450 a month, where somebody in that 70 bracket might pay around $600. I believe was the range of this property.
I mean, is $450 the amount that most people are paying around there? I mean, I don't know what they were paying.
That's probably on the low side.
That's kind of the...
To get lower than that, you have to be like Section 8 Public Housing Authority subsidized property.
Are undergoing some renovations, so they do take Section 8 tenants.
So we're going back into the same, this project... But these are rental properties?
This would be rental, this particular project would be rental.
I don't think, we agreed when we started this project that we were going to build houses that you could buy. See, you can't buy a condo like that.
No, but...
This is the same thing that's happened down there at... Tiff County State. It's the same thing that that is. We agreed not to have that. Not the Tiff County State thing here. We agreed that we were going to build houses that, affordable houses, as you said, build houses that you could own one day instead of renting. See, we go back into this thing here, and that ain't what we agreed to.
Well, this particular company, I don't think we ever, I don't remember having that specific a discussion. But that was one of the things that Bruce was mentioning in this other acreage over here that we just closed on in December. They are talking about individual houses, not this...
This is the whole thing on Old Omega Road that we talked about, building houses. See, now you've been to cut off the west side of that to put these dumbass apartments. That ain't what I, what we agreed to. And right now, we're going to take this thing back to the drawing board and redraw this because this ain't what we agreed to. If we wanted that, we will, I mean, we could have got the contractor, whoever did Tiff County State, come do that. But you can't, you can't, you putting people back in the same thing that they just got out? You know, you just got out a renting, a property that was not good for you. You said that we were going to put this affordable housing in there that you could, that people could own one day. You can't own that thing.
No, you can't own this. You're absolutely correct. But we've got this other acreage over here that they could. And we have the CHIP grant that owner-occupants can come in and renovate their, renovate their properties. So if they need a new roof, if they need a new hot water heater. This was the, you know, this was what the Urban Redevelopment Agency that we appointed discussed.
Well, we need to real, get some, there, because you, I, just go ahead. Y'all gonna do it like you want to do it anyway, so just go ahead.
Hold on, let's talk through it, let's talk through.
My understanding was the same as Johnny. I didn't understand it to the apartments that we were going to rent. I, when we discussed mine, and I thought it was whole lot about how, houses, houses. That's always my understanding.
Well, it's up to the council to decide. If you don't think this is the right project.
Yeah, it's, if there's a combination of things that approach this. It only goes so far. 12 acres is a huge tract. And what we're trying to do is meet all the blocks of needs for the complete neighborhood and the city. So half of it, when we started this, the housing, not making it like a housing authority or that these are apartments, these, this obviously comes with responsibilities. Yes, it is rental, but there, yes, there's from gardens, there's community centers, so it becomes a community. The other half of the tract was going to be the smaller homes for affordability because that's going to be the challenge, creating the formula for those that are on a very fixed income to be able to afford a home. So if we try to do that over a 12-acre tract, it's going to be very, very hard. What we're trying to do is upscale the neighborhood as far as the housing options, and then tuck in the smaller homes for homeownership and complete the neighborhood. So that's really the idea behind this. It's not to recreate something, but it's making the best use of the space because we invested, the city invested it. Doing something like this, they pay the city back a portion for the land, so...
Mind us, who was, I know you mentioned those, I know MJ was there, I was there, but of our Urban Redevelopment Authority, our agency, who were the members that were there to hear these presentations? I know Ms. Hightower was there.
Vivian, yeah, Abby, MJ.
Was Dr. Day there? Was it Dr. Day there? Okay, Dr. Day, who else was there? I'm trying to remember who.
That was, I believe, all the URA that was here, and then our staff.
Okay.
But if I may, going back, because I was there in those public meetings. And if we go back and pull the data from the citizens who spoke, they talked about affordable housing. And we've all talked about the idea of independent-owned houses. But I want to share this because not all of you know, some of the staff does. But we got a firm out of Atlanta called Cronberg Wall. They're actually quoted in the South Tifton Redevelopment Plan. And Eric and Elizabeth came and sat and talked with us. And in his dialogue, he talked specifically about, for us to get started on doing housing in South Tifton was going to be difficult to go in to begin with, right now with the market and everything, and build individual to-be-bought homes. He just really came forward and said that. We didn't engage with them in any kind of way, but they came down and spent a day here in Tifton. And so I think there's a lot of data that builds up to this, you know, that supports this. But as Councilman Terrell says, you know, it's up to y'all. I mean, this is a proposal that we have, we put it out there, we went fishing to see who would show up. And this only works, and I can't say it enough, if those low-income housing tax credits are awarded to that company.
Correct.
Yeah, and you may not get that with individual housing.
Bruce, it could be, I heard, my understanding was saying here. But it could be, some people, you know, in Tifton, what, two-thirds people rent to begin with. It could be that's the best option for those who have housing to be able to rent that versus, I guess, it kind of have houses, there are a lot of people that would not qualify because there's a whole lot more than just that payment for. So is there a combination of both? That's not what I had thought or what I'd heard. But it could be that's the best, having that combination with these tax credits could be a better solution, just maybe.
Right.
Bruce, let me ask you a question. The other proposals, were they similar to this, they were apartment-style?
They all were. No individual homeowners. But as Pete mentioned, this very company is the one who talked about that if, if all things worked in their, if they were to be allowed to come back and make a proposal for that eastern side along Park Avenue, they very much talked about townhomes that would be affordable. And they, again, know how to put the projects together. And if you think about it from a development standpoint, South Park Avenue was a street that went all the way down to 17th, and it had homes along there most of the time. Some have been torn down. But we certainly can investigate. It's just will take a lot more work and research to figure out how to do this.
This way here, I'm not going to agree to that because that wasn't what I was told. I ain't going to be able to buy that good right there. Now, let's table it, come back to it, okay? Let's bring the whole redevelopment, I'm sorry, people, let's bring them all in here.
I think they've all been informed about this, is that correct?
Who's, I missed that.
Who was asking about bringing the Redevelopment Authority in?
And they showed, they showed that.
Yeah, they've all been a part of this, yeah. And then the, in fact, the afternoon after we had the presentations, they were informed by the folks on the URA who heard the entire day's worth of presentations. And we didn't really hear any objections to any of the four ideas.
You didn't really hear no objection? And you don't promise us that we're going to put houses here?
All right, do you want to make, do you want to make a motion?
I moved that we table this, and let's go to October, the October council meeting, not the workshop.
Okay, so we have a motion?
I mean, not October, February.
February workshop? Is that what you want?
Let's look at it.
I'll second that, this is your district. This is your district. And you're very passionate about it.
Hold on, our attorney has a comment.
What's the difference between, I mean, I'm always confused about it. What's the difference, Mike, what's a table postponement, I mean?
A table, it stays within this meeting, it's just later in.
Okay.
That's what you wanted to do. Postpone it until February workshop.
So we have...
Postpone February workshop.
You want to second, or I'll second?
I mean, I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to table this until the February workshop.
Well, I mean, my opinion is, is if Johnny's got some objection to it, and he's going to, you know, speak with his constituents, as an elected official, I want him to have that opportunity. I know he should have been at the meetings. However, this is going to be his opportunity to do that, to address the board. And I mean, if this was in my community, I would, or in my district, I would want that same level of respect. So that's why I'm doing it, I'm seconding it.
Okay, all right, I will call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, aye am opposed.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's see, where are we now? Okay, we are under other business, and we are under, can we, are you getting us back to our? Okay. And we are at our board's report. Yeah, no, we've got to sign back in, I think. Do y'all, is it coming back up for y'all?
Do we sign back in?
You just have to sign back in.
Let's put a dial on, put about, speak yourself.
I think we already signed back in, yeah. It came right back up.
You got yours, okay. Okay, has everybody got theirs?
No.
Hold on.
All right, thanks.
All right, and we have... All right, we have three boards that we'll be appointing to this evening. That would be the Zoning Board of Appeals, Downtown Development Authority, and Tourism. So we'll need to take those individually, so we can start wherever y'all want to. Whatever you want to do. Can you get, is it?
I'll tell you what, can I go ahead and...
Sure.
Go ahead.
Starting with Tourism first?
Sure.
I make a motion to appoint Frank Sales to the Tourism Board.
Okay, and Frank's application is in our packet and is complete. So we have a motion to appoint Frank Sales to the Tifton-Tiff County Tourism Board. Is there a second? Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Johnny, did you vote? I didn't hear.
Yeah.
You did? Okay, I didn't hear, I'm sorry.
I was trying to get that.
Okay. All right, so we've got Tourism taken care of. So Jessica, you'll contact Mr. Sales and let him know that he is now representing the City of Tifton along with Mr. William Bowen on the Tifton-Tiff County Tourism Association.
Mayor, I would also like to make a motion to appoint Lonnie Lewis to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
All right, and Lonnie's application is complete and is in our packet. So we have a motion to appoint Lonnie, to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Is there a second? Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? We got a motion and a second to appoint Lonnie Lewis. Any further discussion to the Zoning Board of Appeals? So, all right, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. And that's got Zoning Board of Appeals, and that leaves us with the Downtown Development Authority. We do have a, an opening on the, for the city to have, the city council to have an appointee. As you'll recall, Mr. Sales was our appointee when he was on city council. So that position is open. So if we want to start there, we can take that position first.
I moved, sent Jack Falk over there.
Jack Falk?
Yeah.
You sure you want to do that to the DDA?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm picking it, I'm picking at him.
Mass resignation.
All right, so we have, we have a motion on the floor to appoint Jack Falk to the Downtown Development Authority as our council representative. Is there a second?
Say.
Thank you. All those, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, congratulations, Jack. I know Abby will be in touch with you to give you the meeting schedules and get you all brought up and any details that you need to make that transition.
You just had to.
I just had to.
Okay. And then we do have two, two DDA members whose terms have expired. The way that our DDA, oh, not just our DDA, but any of our... The way that our DDA, oh, not just our DDA, but any of our board's work is those people whose terms have expired will continue to serve until, until they are either officially reappointed or someone else is appointed to serve in their place. So, we've got two...
Can I make a motion?
Sure.
I want to move, appoint Dr. Steve Rigdon and Jay Mullenax to the...
To the Downtown Development Authority? Okay, and those applications are complete and are in our packet. So, we have the motion to approve Dr. Rigdon and Mr. Mullenax. Is there any, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. We do have some other board positions that are open. However, we're going to review some of the, some of the applications and our board application process. So, we'll be working with our city clerk on that to fill, there's a couple of others that we'll, we'll come back and deal with those later. All right, that is all we have for the board report, is there city manager report?
Hey, ma'am, if you just hand it up, we're going to brief you on something that we're having to deal with. Not unexpectedly, but something a certain amount of long. Talk about this to the DDA as well. And this is concerning the railroad again and DOT. They have hired a consultant that wants to redo the crossing arms on Main Street. And what they're saying is that the equipment's outdated. So, if you look at the little map and the depiction of that, they want to create this bulb out to put the arms and gates and bells and whistles in, which will come out into the street. DDA obviously is not in favor of this. I did talk to DOT about this as to why the rail is not used. If it's used once, twice a year, I don't know. But, spending the money and upgrading these crossing arms does not make any sense. And it's going to, it's going to cause a pretty, pretty good interruption on Main Street, which does not make sense. So, we're going to run this down, I'm going to be sending some emails in spirit with Abby and the DDA, trying to find out why this is. But, you know, you look at four hundred thousand dollars plus cost on a project like this that doesn't mean anything, that is a complete interruption of Main Street USA, it doesn't make any sense. So, I'm going to keep you posted on this, and I don't...
I want to ask Bruce a question. Bruce, anytime there's something regarding historic anything, I just consider you such an expert. I know we've talked about the fact that those crossings, the equipment that's there now could be considered antiqueness. And here we have a railway museum right next door to this. The train is sort of our emblem, we have a lot of signage, it's a significant part of the history of our community and how we were founded and developed. Is there any consideration of that? I know we talked about that at one time. What was the, was there any consideration for that with this crossing?
Two things. When we had the meeting with the railroad people, there were two questions in particular. If those crossing arms were nineteen thirties, they would be considered historic fabric contributing to the National Register District. And anytime you expend money in National Register District, federal money, and that's what we need to find out, is this federal money that's coming down to GDOT? Because if it is, they've got to go through what they call Section 106 review. And when I brought that up, they got very quiet in the room. But, and then the answer is if the worst comes to pass and they push it through, we ask that they donate those arms to, or those signals, I should say, to the city of Tifton.
So, we don't know, we don't know yet if what that review would be, that we would request that they go through.
If I could make a comment from the floor.
Please.
We have a preservation planner, we have a contract with the South Georgia Regional Commission. We need to put a request in to have him advise the city council on what the issues would be, the removal of that historic fabric from our National Register District, and what that triggers for GDOT to have to do.
Could y'all engage in that conversation and bring them forward, if you don't mind? And...
We will, we'll keep you updated. It's just, this has been probably nine months I've been dealing with this. So, I'm holding it off as much as I can, but they've, they've re-engaged and they're, it sounds like they're ready to go. So, we'll do that, and we're going to get some other people involved to just ask why and explain the situation. I'll keep you posted on that. And then, secondly, don't forget the Coca-Cola ribbon cutting this Thursday.
Exactly, that's at three o'clock. And then, following that evening, we have the chamber dinner. And so, we'll want to be supportive of those events. Okay, that it?
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll wrap up here with our meeting. We will be going into executive session following this, but we'll conclude this portion of our meeting with our council, mayor and council comments. So, Jack, I'll start with you on that end. And we don't want to hear anything about LSU.
Do I need to stand?
Oh, boy.
Is that required? Rob, Rob would get upset. I think, Rob, you're shaking your head. Thinking, why does he do it, why does he do it? Mine's around safety again and golf carts. And as we talked the other day at the retreat, we've got, we're a golf cart community, and we have an ordinance around golf carts. They have to be registered with the city, they have to be street legal and all that. So, we either have to start enforcing that ordinance and stopping these carts, which is about ninety percent of them, the ones that I see that go by, and get them street legal and get them registered with the city. I've talked with Pete, I've talked with Chief, and I want at least have this discussion today before all of a sudden we started stopping them. So, the people need to know what's required. That, you know, they will be stopped, and they will be told they've got to get these things registered, get them street legal, because there's some that you just, you just can't see. It's at dusk, and there's no lights, there's no flashing light, somebody's going to get hit. And please, and you cannot have a six-year-old driving it, even though you're sitting next to them and you're looking at your phone, that does not qualify. I saw that the other day. So, I mean, it's just craziness. And the last thing I want is for them to get hurt or killed, or somebody else who's just minding their own business, and all of a sudden they run up on a golf cart that they didn't see. So, anyway, Chief, let's go forward, please, and let's get these things legal. That's all.
Thank you, all right. Councilman Terrell?
Jack's comment was my comment.
You good with that?
Yeah, we need to just do something about these golf carts on city streets. Maybe we need to educate. Maybe we need to educate, put it on our website. What you going to have, that, what you need to be, to be street legal. And that way, we won't run into no suits or anything, or you just stopping me, picking on me or whatever. But, let's just educate first. I think we should educate the public, hey, this is what going to get you stopped. This is what, what you need to do to keep them getting stopped. See, once we do that, I think, once we run it on our webpage or in the newspaper, and we give them a chance to see, then we can give out the tickets.
Okay.
What you think? All right, that's me.
All right. My comment is just to remind you about the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast on February the sixth. That's a Thursday morning. The prayer breakfast is early, seven thirty, I think. Tickets are ten dollars, and that does just basically cover the cost of the meal that will be at the Leroy Rogers Senior Center. We have a speaker that's involved with the Will Graham program that's going to be in Tifton soon. And I think it's going to be, it's always a very inspirational and good...
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty.
Can I have my at a level?
No, you don't get brunch. So, I just want to remind you about that and invite everyone to come out and participate in that. So, Wes?
Earlier tonight, we heard about the different projects that the Downtown Development Authority has accomplished over the last couple of years and last couple of months. I want to congratulate that group. I know there's a lot of work being put into those projects, and our downtown is successful because of that organization. Mr. Lowe, being the chairman, we appreciate his service to that committee as well as all the other board members. And I just wanted to send them my congratulations and thank you for the services. It's not an easy board to serve on, there's a lot of different moving parts to it. And just again, our downtown looks as good as it does because of that, those individuals. So, thank you.
Mr. MJ?
I had a community person come to me and asked about the homeless people sleeping behind the downtown buildings and under buildings as well. I don't know what's the legal things or to go about checking on that type of stuff, but that was brought up a couple of times. Mr. Chief back there, I don't know what's the proper way of handling those type of deals. But I think it's a lot of that going on now. And people are nervous, scared, you know, I'm saying that they're doing anything. But, you know, it's a concern, so...
It's a very difficult legalization.
Yeah, we've had, we've discussed many times, you know, the challenges when you have homelessness, which is a sad situation in and of itself. And then, sometimes you combine that with potentially mental illness, and then, you know, people panhandling and different things. So, I know we've discussed it, but I appreciate you bringing that back around because it's something we need to continue to discuss. So, we can certainly, Rob can get with you on some of that. And we can, you know, if there's anything we, actually, we need to take, we can support that, so...
And if there is a circumstance like that, if they could certainly call 911, our officers, if they do find homeless, and we know where the pockets are, where they go, we try to help them through Brother Charlie's, through other organizations. So, we'll, we'll get them to at least get some help. So, if they know where they are, if they see them, if they'll call the police department, we'll be glad to help out.
All right, any other business to come before the council? All right, we will need to go into executive session, I believe, for legal matters, is that correct? Okay, just legal, okay. So, I will need a motion to that effect, to go into executive session for legal matters. Okay, thank you, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. We'll take about a two-minute break, and then...